It must be time to call this meeting to order. It's nice, I didn't even have to put my hand up. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order September 23rd. Joe will use lead us in the flag salute.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to number two, adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second by Laurel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number three, superintendent's report. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. To begin my report this evening, I'd like to introduce several of our staff members who are supervising students in items that are of note. And we have with us tonight Laurel Doherty from Carson Middle School, and we also have Dr. Sue Molden from Eagle Valley Middle School. I'd like to invite them forward to talk a little bit about the Green Apple Day of Service.
Good evening, I'm Laurel Doherty. I'm from Carson Middle School, and we are, excuse me, we are participating this year in the Third Annual Green Buildings, Green Apple Day of Service by doing a wetlands cleanup at Carson Middle School. Students have shown great interest in the area out there, and we have two ducks out there now, so that's, kids love that too. So we are going to be working on Saturday from nine o'clock till noon to get the weeds out of the area. We're putting down cardboard and then putting DG on top of it to keep the weeds down. We have several community partners too. Home Depot is helping with, Cinderlight is helping us with this, and Lois has also donated for us.
Wow, that's pretty cool. I want to come.
Hi, I'm Dr. Molden from Eagle Valley, and our activity is, is we're going to try and spruce up our blacktop on the campus where the kids actually have the lunch area. It's the old drop-off parking lot area, and so currently it's just blacktop with two tetherball poles in the middle of it. And then right in the center is this dirt area with a whole bunch of big rocks. And so we decided that we want to try and really make it more feasible for kids to give them something to do. So Mr. Ply, one of the PE teachers, has decided to gather all of his kids, Mr. Morrison's going to join in, Ms. Reed's going to join in, and they're going to paint four-square games on the blacktop, put actual circles and lines for the tetherballs to make it official, put a hopscotch out there to actually the kids want to play. So we've thought, why not bring it on? So Carson Paint Mart is donating the paint for us, and both Les Schwabs have pitched in to donate to buy us a nice metal picnic table to put out in the dirt area by the flagpole, and the kids are motivated to clean that area up so that it's more usable, so.
We're looking forward to seeing before and after pictures.
Okay, and ours is going, we're going to do ours on Friday as long as it's not raining. That's the goal, so that we can paint, but if anything, we'll get the area all cleaned up and we'll paint later, so.
Thank you, ladies, it sounds like great projects. Appreciate that.
Madam President, members of the board, also with us tonight in support of Green Apple Day of Service, we have Janine Harder, who is the Executive Officer of Sustainable Nevada, and we also have Carol Gata, who is a member, chairperson actually, of the Green Building Council. And we'd like to just say welcome to you folks and thanks for your support and the opportunities that you're providing in your support of this kind of work. So thank you very much for being here. Carrying on, Madam President, the one-to-one parent night, informational parent night for our one-to-one project is coming to the following elementary schools on October 1st from 6:00 to 7:00. That will occur at Boarderwick Bray. The information night at Seliger will occur on October the 2nd from 5:30 to 6:30, and at Empire Elementary School from, on October the 7th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So again, that's an opportunity for our parents to learn more about what their students will have access to with regard to our one-to-one mobile technology project. I'd also like to report to the trustees that our online student information project is nearing 88% complete. And so we still have some work to do, but we have really had some hard work by staff members, and we really want to thank the parents. I know this has been a lot of work, and we appreciate all the staff members who have given help and encouragement to our families in completing this project. And of course, obviously, that increases our ability to contact people and to make sure that our information is correct, especially when we do all calls or use our school messenger system. We have the most up-to-date information, so we'd just like to encourage people, if they have not yet taken advantage of filling in their students enrollment information, we'd like to encourage them to either contact their schools or the district office, and we'd be happy to assist them. I'd also like to announce that in partnership with the Carson City Health and Human Services, we'll be participating in a flu clinic, and those flu clinics will be occurring at our various schools beginning in October. We will be sending home and making available parental consent forms, and those can be found on our website at carsoncityschools.com. And lastly, on October the 13th, which is a Monday coming, that'll be a professional development day for our staff, and there will be no students attending school that day. And that is all that I have to report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Moving on to number four, board reports. Carson High, Amber filling in for the injured Jake Jones.
Good evening. Carson High School is in the middle of fall sports session, and all of our teams will be doing exceptionally well and continue to do exceptionally well. We still have numerous home games for every sport, so be sure to check the Carson calendar on the CHS website for dates and times. The date for homecoming is also approaching, which is October 14th through the 18th. The theme this year is around the world. The activities will be announced as the week approaches. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, and good luck to the football team. They're going against undefeated Huggs, so, in Huggville, so.
Yeah.
Going on, go down. Going on to Pioneer High, Kaylee.
Thank you, Madam President and the board, for allowing us to give our report. We held the open house, and it was a record in parent participation, thanks to Dr. Delphin and Mr. Stokes for visiting the event. Student leadership, we have assigned officers. We have a co-presidents, Kaylee O'Neal and Sierra Skanador, our treasurer Geneva Olivera, our secretary Olivia Sherez, and board representative Kaylee Farica. And then Pioneer Food Drive, during the month of October, we will be hosting our first food drive to support the people in our community through fish, so bring your non-perishable food items to Pioneer High School. Thank you, this concludes the activities, events, announcements for Pioneer High School.
Thank you. You notice I don't pronounce your guys' last name, then I don't have to worry about it.
No worries.
But you did a great job working on your hair.
Just following the announcements.
I know, I'm just giving you a tip from this side of the mic. Anyway, going on to Candace. Steve?
I didn't have to invite Principal Gillis here to do the report for me. At Fremont, our additional kindergarten classes started. The transition was very smooth with positive parent support. Fifth graders participated in dollars and cents training by our community partner, City National Bank. Staff members took the ALS Ice Bucket Challenge and also donated to the charity. And at Fremont, we had a very good turnout on the 9th through the 16th at the initial information meeting and pizza dinner for dads and their students for the Dads of Great Students, the Dogs Program, sponsored by the PTA. We had quite a few sign up to be fingerprinted and then volunteer Fremont, and our first dog dad volunteered on Jog-a-thon Day last Friday. Unfortunately, the Jog-a-thon was postponed due to the unhealthy air condition. We did keep the pledges, though.
(laughing).
Over 30 students won prizes that were donated by our community and parents. They will hope to have the Jog-a-thon on October 3rd. On Thursday, the 18th, Fremont hosted the first one-to-one mobile device information night for parents of third, fourth, and fifth graders. Those parents who are unable to attend, if most may go to the meeting times, the remaining elementary schools, Mr. Stokes brought up tonight. On October 22th to 26th, Fremont's holding their monthly lunch bunch for all Fremont families and friends. We're looking forward to a large turnout. And this week is also the Falcon Five pledge week. Leadership students have planned this event to have every student take the pledge to follow the Falcon Five rules of behavior this year. And then we'll also, Fremont will also be holding a math and technology parent university and participating in Walk to School Day all prior, prior to the next board meeting. And that concludes Fremont. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve Linett.
So for Boarderwick Bray, they are having their Jog-a-thon on October 3rd. Hopefully it won't get smoked out. Also, family movie night did get canceled because of the smoke, so that has been rescheduled for Friday, September 26th. It's going to start at seven o'clock with the showing of The Jungle Book. And then also, as Mr. Stokes reported, there is the mandatory meeting for the one-to-one mobile devices, and that's on October 1st at 6:00 p.m. And again, just provides insight on the one-to-one devices and what the responsibility of the parent and the student is. And then I also just wanted to put a shout out to Ms. Terri Vance. I noticed in the paper that she did get an award from the Nevada Press Association for second place for best news feature story, so congratulations. And we really do appreciate all the work that you do for us. It's greatly appreciated, so thanks.
Okay, for Fritsch, their laptop parent information night was tonight from 5:30 to 6:30. I was unable to attend because I had to feed the children. But I have seen LeAnn Morris do this before, and she's very good, so I'm sure it was successful. And I do have a fourth grader who's very much looking forward to receiving his laptop. This Thursday at Fritsch, the fourth and fifth grade Lego robotic teams will be having their first meeting at 3:30 in Mrs. Howard's classroom. And on Friday is picture day, and also the PTA fundraiser is in full swing right now, so if you are interested in high-quality wrapping paper, you can see me. They're doing it in a spruce. They went back to it this year, so I'm your source, or any other parent at Fritsch is your source. Also, the next PTA meeting is Monday, October 6th at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Joe.
Carson High School, a few announcements. Lip Sync auditions are happening Monday, September 29th, 2:00 p.m. in the upstairs cafeteria. Skills USA, their regular meeting moved to Wednesday, tomorrow, the 24th, and that'll be lunchtime at the high school and the culinary restaurant. The Climbing Club has a meeting Thursday, the 25th, in Mr. Maitel's room, room 213, and that's in regards to them going to Rockport to do some climbing, and that's where they'll fill out their necessary paperwork and whatnot. New members are welcome, but to go, you have to attend the September 25th meeting. UNR College of Ag is having a meeting greet at the high school library at lunchtime on this Thursday. From UNR will be the College of Ag, Biotechnology and Natural Resources, so anybody whose children are interested in learning a little bit about what UNR has to offer in those fields, that'd be worthwhile attending. Psychology Club also has a meeting tomorrow, lunch in Mr. Steinle's room, which is room 250. And Senior Parent Night, September 29th, next Monday at 6:00 p.m. in the library, and that's an opportunity for parents who have seniors this school year. They'll give you information about college and testing and kind of the whole rundown of what their senior year in high school is going to look like, so anyone who's interested. We went last year, and it was good information. Carson Middle School, I don't have the details on it, I think I mentioned it last time, but kids in leadership, some of them got selected to go to the leadership camp, and they're going this weekend. It's up, I don't know exactly where it is, I should know, my daughter's going, but it's up in, it's up in the Gray Eagle area. I have the paperwork at home.
Are you done?
Um, no.
Okay. I just wanted to add one more thing about CMS when you get done.
Okay, that's all I had for CMS. I had one more announcement, but go ahead and.
Just for CMS, because I was helping out with this, they are starting up the Lego robotic team, and I helped do the sign-ups at lunch, and there were over 120 kids interested in signing up for the team. So we're hoping that we can get good commitments, and we're also looking for potential sponsorship, and parents to volunteer, or possibly even high school seniors that are looking for a senior project that might want to help coach that.
Sorry, last thing I had, last week, Boarderwick Bray staff, they got challenged, I'm not sure by who, but they got challenged to the Ice Bucket Challenge, and they had about 12 teachers and staff out there, including the principal, who I'm going to tease a little bit because she showed up with a construction hard hat and waterproof clothing. But nonetheless, she showed up, and about 12 of them got doused with buckets full of water and ice. And even before I started teasing them, they challenged the school board and the district staff to the Ice Bucket Challenge. So we have been challenged to do it as well. And so many district staff and school board members that can make it, it looks like we're scheduled for Monday, September 29th at 4:30, and we'll meet at the Carson Middle School track. So bring some clothes, you don't care about getting wet. It's going to be a little cold, but it won't be too terrible. And then we get to decide who's going to get challenged after us, so if you have been meaning to contact some folks, now's your chance. But anyway, Monday at 4:30 at Carson Middle School, and if anybody who can do it can give me a heads up, I'll round up buckets and things like that, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Stokes?
Trustee Cassioppo, are you providing the ice?
No, I'm providing one of the heads for it to be dumped on. But I was wondering, I was wondering if, you know, if we could coordinate with the district and see where maybe we can get some ice.
I am certain that Carson High School has an ice machine full of ice waiting for us to use it.
Well, I was thinking Carson Middle, but I can, I can, I can get the, well, it depends. We can do that, but I can bring the ice over from Carson High School.
Let me find out first if there's an ice machine at Carson Middle School.
Let me know, and then I'd be happy to get the buckets and take it over there.
There probably is. Okay. All right, we'll, we'll help you with those details.
Ron?
I have a report on the Workforce Education Committee of NNTA. Today, there was a, what was called the Sierra Region Workforce Summit. It was a WNC, sponsored by WNC and NNTA. Let me just tell you some of the participants and then what we did. Like from, from Carson, we had the Carson City of Education, Carson City Library, Carson City High School Career and Technical Education, Churchill County Career and Technical Education, Douglas County Career and Technical Education, City of Fernley, Douglas County Workforce Development, Job Connect, Carson City, Lyon County Career and Technical Education, Nevada Department of Education Career and Technical Education, WNC, and WNC Workforce Development. There are many more, but there were over 50 participants in this meeting. The meeting, or the reason for the summit meeting was to get all of the entities that are involved in workforce education in one room to begin, not to begin, but to continue our process, to tell again the world, what do we have in this region? Where can we go to find it? And so the objective of today's meeting, we all got to meet each other, and we had some crossover things of what we did. But what, what came out of this is that we will now take all of this that was discussed today into a workforce education directory. We're talking about K-20, not just K-12, K-20 certification programs, especially adult, special adult programs, but it's all intended to say, what can we do through education to invite businesses into our region? Now, we know that we're going to have a little ripple effect of Tesla, and because of that, I think Carson City, our school district, we're poised perfectly. We, we started this two to three years ago. We got the kids early on initiated into what's going on in our community, businesses, whether it's manufacturing, ag, health occupations, you know, we got that part going. But this brought together all of the interested parties and that have a lot to share originally within our counties, and it, it turned out really well. Sarah Adler was the facilitator, and at the end, there were scenarios in which we had Rob Hooper, Ronnie Hanneman, and others actually evaluate what we had to offer. And so, so at the end of the day, I'm just telling you, it's all coming together where there will be one place, that what we have will be available 24/7 through NNTA and for the entire region of, as far as education is concerned. Education in total and workforce education specifically. Anyway, my report. Madam President.
Thank you. It's an exciting time. I think it'll be really interesting to see how all of this all goes together, and I think next week is manufacturing week up at the college to tie in all that. Well, Lynette stole my thunder. Terri, we're all really proud of you, and congratulations, but she already took the thunder, so. Also, I ran into Mrs. Kelly, and Skills USA is having a fundraiser bingo night on October 10th. They have lots of prizes, including iPads. For Nevada School Board Association, we went, was it last Saturday? I think last Saturday was the school safety meeting, and that was real good. And then the board meeting afterwards was just discussing things we're going to be doing in November, so if you haven't signed up for that. And the other thing is, I had Renee send out the evaluation forms, because we only have one meeting in November. So if you have any corrections to that form, get them back to her by the next meeting, and then that'll give us two to three weeks to work on it, get a committee together to work on it. And then you'll be able to be ready on November 25th. And that's all I have. Other comments. Moving on to number five, association reports. Seeing none, moving on to number six. This is a time, this public comment, this is a time when members of the public can talk on any matters in this board that aren't on the agenda. You have three minutes, and please state your name for the record when you come up. And we have David Carter to start us off. Welcome.
For the record, my name is David Carter. Madam President, trustees, staff, parents and grandparents, consider the following scenario. Your child or grandchild gets involved in a dust-up at school, doesn't matter how old they are, they actually get expelled and maybe even spend a little time in juvenile hall. Well, if they keep their nose clean, at some point, that record for at least juvenile hall may be expunged, and they can legally then claim that they have not been arrested when they go to apply for a job or try to apply for college. But under the current student data collection system, not determined by the state of Nevada, but by common core, it is a requirement that if an altercation occurs at a school, that record stays with that student, not only while they're a student, but also once they graduate and can be used and reviewed, as it currently stands, by potential employers and by the schools that they would plan to attend for college and universities. As I understand it, the State Department of Education, along with a few legislatures, legislators are working on some changes to the Nevada Student Data Collection System, which will make it much more safe in, and less able to hacking and, and other problems that may arise from it. But this would not be an item that could be reviewed by the legislature. And that is another reason why I have severe problems with the common core. Core. And right now, there's only state, eight states that have actually pulled out of Common Core, and so they, or never were part of it. And so they are not governed by those principles. But the, the 42 states that are still part of Common Core would be governed by those student principles of any kind of altercation on campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other public comment? Seeing none. We'll move on to number seven, informational update on Food for Thought Program in the Carson City School District. Mrs. Maffey, come on up. And congratulations. We're so excited about this new chapter.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you for inviting me here tonight to discuss and update Food for Thought with you, and just share a little bit. First, I would like to do a recap of the program, just in case there are people who maybe are unaware. Food for Thought is in its sixth year working with the Carson City School District, distributing bags of food to the children for weekends. Our mission is to provide nutritious meals over the weekend to food insecure children. We have a coordinator at every school. We're currently serving 13 schools in Carson City and surrounding areas. Each school has a coordinator. Every Monday, they receive an email asking for numbers. The numbers are changing all of the time due to circumstances, children moving in and out of the area. And then the bags are distributed to all of the schools on Thursdays, and then discreetly handed out on Fridays to the children. We've been working very closely this year with Peggy Sweetland on information. It's a little bit of a slow start this year for us. We just completed our third week of distribution last Friday, and we were just about 300 bags out the door. So we'd like to see that number increase. It's looking better for this week. We have, I wanted to give you guys some information. Just, I think it's really hard that, that the problem exists in our community, but we don't see it. Carson City is a beautiful, quaint little town, and people drive through, and everything just looks great. And, but the issue is there, and it does exist. So for the 2013-14 school year, Food for Thought distributed 6,500 bags in 40 weeks to the children. And of that, 6151 went to just Carson City School District students. So that's a pretty significant number. When I spoke with Peggy this morning, it seems that the number is going to be on the rise this year, and Food for Thought is prepared to take on the additional children. We've also been implementing, we've picked up the Silver State Charter School. I know they're not in the district, but they're still children of our community, and there really is a great need over there. They do have an older population of students, so we're implementing a food pantry with them to assist those older kids. Last week, we gave them 55 pounds of food, and they have about 10 kids on the backpack program. So the identification process is pretty slow. All of the teachers have a referral form that they can use based on what they see and witness with the students. They can turn it in, it goes to Peggy. We start the identification process to get them on the program. So each school has a cap amount, and Food for Thought has a cap amount for weekly distribution. It's about 300 bags right now, is what we could put out the door every week, and we're working on increasing that, and it's looking very hopeful that that's going to happen. We would also like to implement a food pantry at Pioneer High School and at Carson High School. Last year, we started the process with Carson High, and they identified about five students, and they only requested food one time. I think it's a little bit more difficult for the older students to come forward when there's a need. So we're, we're working on figuring that out. We're working on distributing fresh fruits to the kids twice a month. We did it the last three weeks of the year. I would email the school coordinators and say, hey, there's going to be fresh fruit in your tubs this week, just a heads up. And the feedback we got was amazing. The kids loved it, so they received their bag, they received an apple, and, you know, can we eat it right now? And so giving them the fresh fruit instead of always just the shelf-stable things is something that we should be able to do throughout the entire school year. And then we have the summer food program, which starts the first Monday of summer vacation. This year, we had 54 serving days, and we did 4,082 meals. So that's open to children in the community ages 2 to 18. They, we had three locations. We utilize the community center kitchen, high school culinary students, and we cook every day. We prepare fresh meals. We take them out there. The kids eat. They have activities. They play. It's really, really great. We were able to identify some children this year through one of our locations that they were not on the summer, or on the backpack program, and now we've got them there. So it's, it's, it's a collaborated effort between the schools and the community, and a lot of work. And Food for Thought appreciates the school district letting us, you know, implement our program and distribute through your guys' schools, and help the kids of the community. And hopefully, we can conquer all of them, and make sure we are taking care of all of them that are in need. So does anybody have any questions about the program, or?
Any questions?
No.
Lynette?
I just wanted to thank you, Marlene, for all your work that you do. I do sit on the board, as most of you know, and Marlene has just, she fell into this job, and she's just really taken, taking it on and doing a great job. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
We appreciate you coming and taking the time out to come and update us on everything. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to number eight, discussion and possible action to approve the superintendent's recommendation for appointment of Mr. Sam Santillo as Director of Adult Ed Program. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Late in the summer, Mr. Ferd Mariani, who is our Director of Adult Ed and Prison Ed, retired from the school district. He was somewhat of an institution, was here his entire career, and we wish, wish him well in his retirement. However, his departure left a vacancy in one of our important programs. That would be our adult education and our prison ed program. We went through the typical process of posting our position. We gathered individuals to help, to interview, and we selected three individuals who were interviewed for this position. And after things were said and done, it was the committee's recommendation that Mr. Sam Santillo be recommended for that position. Mr. Santillo is a 23-year veteran of Carson City School District. He's been a teacher, a vice principal, a director, and a principal, and certainly has qualities and experience that will be able to lead this program, as Mr. Mariani has done. He's got great connections in the community. He has lived here a long time, and as such, knows many individuals who help him at, or will help him in this program as teachers and also supporters. And so it's my recommendation to the board this evening that Mr. Sam Santillo be hired as our Director of Adult Ed and Prison Ed. And Mr. Santillo is here this evening to say a few words, if you would like. And he's also here with his wife, Cherie. We'd like to welcome her here as well.
You want a motion first, and then here, Sam? Or you want to hear Sam, and then a motion?
Let's hear Sam.
Come on up, Sam.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Stokes. It's a privilege and an honor for me to be able to serve the district in another capacity through the adult ed and prison education. I'm currently the Assistant Principal at Sealer Gare Elementary School, so I'm transitioning out of that and doing the adult and correction position at the same time. But I feel very fortunate and honored to have the support of the school district and the community in my new position, and I'm looking forward to it. It's a very important position for the school district. As you know, it actively affects our graduation rates. So I take that very seriously, and I'm looking forward to maintaining in that capacity, and doing what I can to address all aspects of it, but especially that part of it. So thank you. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Well, it's not like you're not used to wearing a couple different hats in one position. You've done a lot of different things, so we're real excited about this opportunity.
Terry Vance asked me a question today. I thought it was kind of interesting. You know, I've done some elementary for a couple of years. Most of my experience is at the middle school secondary level. And she said, how is it kind of different? And actually, it's really kind of the same. I'm an administrator in the school district. I'm an educator. Whether we're educating kids through kindergarten, through high school, or beyond, it's our role to service them and provide support for them. So we do that for six and seven-year-olds. We do that for middle school kids and high school kids. These are adults that are attached to our community, and they're attached to our school district. So it's just another role and another service that I feel the two programs can provide the community as well as the school district. So it's just really kind of the same work. It's just really on a different level with some different learners and some different folks in our, in our district. So I'm really looking forward to it.
Just, I guess it goes to Mr. Delphin. You don't have enough to do. How are we, how are we looking for a replacement at Sealer Gare?
We actually, last I looked, we have about seven folks that are putting a name in. Some are completed, some are not. So it's on.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve the selection of Mr. Sam Santillo as the Director of the Adult Education Program.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none. Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You guys have been bold, but you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to. Okay. Just checking. Good for you, Amber. Well, you are at the mic, so if you have questions of anybody, feel free to ask. You're welcome. Moving on to number nine, report on the types of services provided by CCSD by the Northwestern Regional Professional Development Program for the 2013-2014 school year, for discussion only. Mrs. Kima?
Thank you, President Wilkie, members of the board. The Northwestern, the Northwest Regional Professional Development Program serves as the professional development arm of the Nevada Department of Education. There are three regional professional development programs. One is located in the Elko area. One serves the districts around Clark County, and then the third one is surrounding our area. It involves Washoe County, Douglas, Lyon County, Story, and Churchill County, as well as us. And during, in these programs, they, the program, the entity, each district supports the program by bringing one person to the table. Our person for our district is Jackie McCune. She's a former Fremont teacher. Not only was she a great classroom teacher, she was a coach and part of the leadership team that supported the school in moving from a two to a three-star school. She is a curriculum integration specialist that focuses on math and science for the elementary level in our district. And she is our representative to the Northwestern Regional Professional Development Program. The program itself focuses on the educational initiatives that are going on in the state of Nevada. So if you look at your data, it represents similar things as what you've seen in the past, where we focused on the content standards. And in this past year, it was primarily math that we focused on for training for our teachers and our administrators. The other piece that the, our PDP has taken on is to support the work of the Teachers Leaders Council in the, not in the development of the Nevada Educator Performance Framework, but in the message of that performance framework. Each one of our staff members, and our teachers and our administrators have been through an initial training from the RPDP on the rubrics of the new educator performance framework, and the expectations for what we know about them at this point. And that was conducted last spring, or in August, to finish up the middle schools. So the data that you see is mostly about that work with the Nevada Educator's Performance Framework, as well as math work here in our district. The name on the form that you have there is Kirsten Gleisner. She's the director. She was here last year. She was new to the program. I introduced her to you. I would have liked to have brought Jackie with me this evening, so you could have met her, but she's currently teaching a class up at Sierra Nevada. So she, once a teacher, always a teacher, so she's working up there this evening, and is not with us, is not tonight. What I will do on behalf of the board, per NRS 391.556, is I'll be submitting this report that the RPDP has produced for us. I'll be forwarding that on to the departments that are required per the NRS on your behalf. So unless you have questions, really, that was my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Steve?
Mrs. Kima, and I think you've answered this before. The, how is it determined what teachers attend the different courses? Is that something the district decides, or does the teacher sign up for? How's that work?
I think it, it just depends on what's being offered. For example, with the Teachers Leaders Council work regarding the new evaluation performance framework, that is something from, directed from the state to the RPDPs, that all teachers need to have some kind of exposure, some initial information about the framework. So we tried to set up sessions in our district for all teachers to be able to participate, and then still, there might be some opportunities for those that need to make up the session to attend at another district or at a later date. As far as the math, most of the work has been done in the elementary, and it was done by visiting the schools, walking through the classrooms with the principals, meeting with a cadre of grade-level teachers, working on their curriculum and assessment. So it's, it looks different for different folks, as well as we did bring in a workshop, sometimes on a Saturday. That's voluntary. So it can look different for different things, depending on the needs.
And we're very comfortable with the fact that we can direct where and how we want this education's support to happen?
Yes. I've always felt our working relationship with the Western, with our Regional Professional Development Program, I think that's a really important thing. And you've, you've seen the program evolve over the years, is that, that districts have the autonomy to utilize that cadre of folks in a way that suits our needs. They have English Language Arts folks that we could draw upon for different things. They have STEM, you know, science, technology, education, engineering, and math. And being that we're going to be rolling out our science standards, Mrs. McCune will be in charge of that, but she'll draw on those other resources and bring those folks in. Right now, we're conducting walkthroughs to look at a baseline for mathematical practices that the teachers are using. We have increased, if you look at our NSPF data, math is the area that we increased the most over last year. And now to look at another strategy to move that up even further, we're looking at where are the teachers starting out this year, and identifying training needs for them, for Mrs. McCune. And she's bringing in a cadre of folks through the RPDP to help support that process with her and the principals in the school.
Yeah, I just was wondering, 373 teachers attended one more session. How many teachers did we employ that last year, just to come up with a rough percentage of about how many attended training?
We typically have about 500 teachers in our ranks. How many people we've hired? My gosh, it's quite a few. I, I can get that number to you if you want later. It's still shaping up.
Yeah, I just want a rough percentage.
Right.
Because there's 370, so yeah, that's a high percentage.
There you go.
Oh, I need to come on back. Sorry.
And this, this focus for the math is for the elementary. Because of the implementation specialists with the Race to the Top, we have that support for the secondary schools. So we're using this to really support our, our elementary schools. With the exception of the number three there for the Nevada Educator Performance Framework, that was K- that was K-12 teachers.
Candace?
The issue that we have, you know, later on the agenda about the educator performance framework, there's no feedback, though, from the training. I mean, it's sort of one-way training, right? There's no evaluation of how people did in the training, per se, that it could be used as just another tool to use in terms of evaluations.
Yes, there is. There is additional feedback in the training. They have a self-evaluation report that they put out for each of the districts, and in the full report on our pages 74 and 75, there's the, it talks about the participants rating on the quality of the RPDP trainings, they have that piece in here. The number of educators, the number of schools served by the RPDP, and it spells that out a little bit about how did the teachers perceive that training? There's some feedback.
But not the reverse way, in terms of RPD evaluating how the teachers did in the training, per se?
I see what you're saying. So, the teachers can provide feedback on the trainers and how they felt that the session affected them. When they do their report, they're following reporters, they're talking about their plan, they're talking about how did this net result with the NEPF? And in our particular case, Alba One Elementary School raised their math scores.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to number 10. Mrs. Kima can stay. Presentation of Nevada School Performance Framework, star ratings for 2013-2014 school year, for discussion only.
This agenda item serves as a summary to last Thursday's September 19th Board Workshop that was held at the district office, but it was also open to the public. Last Thursday evening, members along, of the board, along with the district staff, were able to explore the meeting of the 2013-14 Nevada School Performance Framework results. Dr. Mc, excuse me, Dr. Ricky Medina led the discussion and was able to break down those elements of the Nevada School Performance Framework that led to our districts and our individual schools' star ratings. He covered the status piece, which is, you know, how many students met the benchmark, he covered the growth pieces, as well as how we meet the gap requirements. He also talked about the other indicator for the elementary, that's attendance, as well as for the high school, it is graduation rates and college and career readiness, along with attendance. So, just for the viewing public, for those folks who had not seen the article that Terry Vance put in the paper, or weren't able to attend the board meeting last Thursday night, I just wanted to show a visual of our state system. When they divide up the NSPF, you can see that it's designed so that the majority of the schools fall into the three-star rating category, with the other schools falling either to the left in a one-to-two star rating, or to the right with a four-to-five star rating. If we're looking at how the state did in comparison to our district, we, like the state, had the majority of the schools in the three-star category. That's where elementary schools fell. 15% of the state had the school, our Nevada schools, in the four-star rating, and we were at 36% because of Carson High, our two middle schools, as well as our charter school, Carson Montessori. So, that just gives a visual of where the state, how the state's formulas have set up the schools, that the majority would fall in the middle. This is an overview of the star ratings for our individual schools. As you can see, Empire moved from a two to a three star, Fremont moved from a two to a three star, Eagle Valley moved from a three to a four star. This is the first, as well as Carson High, they also moved from a three to a four star. Pioneer High School was not rated last year as an alternative school. This year, the state felt they had enough data after the third year to be ranked. And as an alternative school, they were ranked with the same criteria as a regular comprehensive high school, and they are a two-star school. Not many alternative schools made it to the two-star, most, many of them are one-stars. And then you can see Carson Montessori is a four-star school for our district. So, this is, this board agenda item was intended to be a summary, because we spent the work last Thursday. If people are interested in more data, more numbers, based looking at subgroups or individual schools, they can go to the Nevada School Performance website in, on the state, and it's listed there on the screen. Our principals haven't let up, you know, Principal Fuson has gone over the Nevada Performance Framework indicators with her leadership team, and is developing her plan of improvement for the high school. She, along with all the other principals, are following suit as they develop their own individual plans, whether in the middle school or in the elementary, to set goals based around our current data for program improvement, to either maintain or improve on their star ratings. So, with that in your board pocket, I just put the same summary that you received last week about where our schools were ranked last year, where they are this year, and you can see where their improvements were.
Any questions? Candace?
I'm just curious, do you see at the district office, when these star rankings come out, do you see any reaction, or do you hear about any reaction from parents, or just general public comments in reaction when these are released to the public at all? Does it make a difference, I guess?
Well, I think the schools, individual schools, the families at the individual schools are anxious for the results, like the staff and the administrators. I think they appreciate it, knowing what ranking their students, their school has, always would like to have that higher ranking. As far as movement throughout the district to a school with a higher ranking, I think that's a combination. And I see that not just with our district, but I see that statewide. You can have schools that are ranked as one star, and you would think people would be flooding out of there, but they don't. We're very lucky that we can talk to folks coming to our districts about, our district about the work that's going on in our school. We can talk, have our realtors talk about the consistency and the improvement that's going on in our schools. And we do, we're increasing enrollment this year, so, you know, there could be a factor there. And you'll see that in some of our variance numbers in another agenda item. And we do, I should say, when we have variances, sometimes parents will write that, they want to come to a particular school. So, I should say periodically, we do see that.
And we do a lot of work with realtors, and that is one of the questions that they do get asked by people moving in, is the ratings of the schools. So, just to let you know that. Mr. Storzak?
I'm not going to go back over the last, that workshop. As an individual board member, though, I would request that then in the proficiency areas, and I'll specifically talk about, say, two schools. We got Carson Middle, we have Eagle Valley, four-star rating, yet in math, we're in the 40%. And I'm using that as an example. My request would be that you would bring back to the board, what are we going to do to actually zero in on the proficiency part of this? And I don't go back over what was said last time, but it's still a big concern, and do I get questions? Yes, but it's usually from the business community to zero in on some proficiencies. We could have a four-star rating, but we're, it's hard to explain that. Okay? We've gone from 41% to 46%, whoa. It doesn't go over well. So, the question is, what are we doing to address this? And I try to explain, we're a learner-centered model, and what does that mean? Everybody should be reaching mastery throughout the year, because we're on top of this. I talk about the learning guides going forward with the, you know, middle schools, the high schools, but in particular, what is it that we're going to do to address these proficiency levels?
Sure. Any other questions or comments? I just have to tell you, that thing that Dr. Medina put us through, I absolutely understand growth now, and that's amazing. So, I did appreciate that.
I'll let him know. Thank you.
Moving on to number 11, discussion and possible action to approve proposed CCSD policies, second reading Policy 313A, Evaluation of Administrative Personnel, Policy 314A, Teacher Probation and Evaluation, Policy 315A, Evaluation of Post, I always have trouble with this, probationary teachers, which policies will be enforced for the 2014-2015 school year in compliance with NRS 391.31214 and 391.31215. Dr. Delphin, take it away.
Madam President, that was a fine job, that's a mouthful. Thank you for doing that. Jose Delphin, for the record. I think, it just seemed like yesterday we were talking about this back in September 9th, so after much discussion that evening, I think everybody got to weigh in. We came up with the number change, as you see on the revision, which went from 75% of professional practice to 95%, and the change of student performance from 25% to 5%. And we do know that Clark County and Douglas are at the same percentage, so with thousands of teachers down south and administrators, they're going with the same numbers as well. So, I just wanted to add that to the body of knowledge, and answer maybe any questions you may have for me.
Mr. Reynolds?
Dr. Delphin, does this replace anything on our current evaluation, or is it in addition to what our current evaluation methods are?
Good question, Mr. Reynolds. It doesn't replace anything that we're currently doing. We have been in the Danielson framework for teachers for a long time, and the instructional leadership framework for administration for at least five years, if not six. So, it doesn't change how we go about determining the efficacy of teachers and how they do rate in our system, and that's part of why we needed to submit this to the board this evening, per the state regs. So, to answer your question, it doesn't change our process.
Let me add one question to that, then. If we do have, so what you're saying, if we do have an educator that may currently be in a corrective or probationary, or, you know, we're doing something there to bring up performance or whatever, this does not restart that, you know, we're still going to be able to be in the midst of that, middle of that program, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. We provide that assistance for any staff member that asks for it, or if through the evaluation process calls for it.
Laurel?
I just have something I noticed this read through. The OCEA, the CCAA, and the district, and the opening line of each of them, I know what the OCEA is now, but perhaps it would be a good idea to fully name the organization, and I'm guessing CCAA is Carson City Administrators Association?
Perfect.
Okay. That, and maybe put Carson City School District first before you do the district, just to fully identify them, and then, you know, call them by the acronyms later. And then, under professional practice, item number four, the quotation marks around satisfactory are in the wrong place.
Oh.
Yep.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion? Candace?
I know you explained it again last time, but what will happen next, again? Did the TLC meet yet, or?
No, tomorrow's the meeting. Please come on down.[1495.83][1495.83](Laughter) It's pretty much all day tomorrow on Fifth Street, it's in their conference room, it's a teleconference between Carson City, Elko, and Las Vegas. So, yeah, expecting interesting news tomorrow.
Joe?
Dr. Delphin, I just wanted to thank you for listening to our comments last time. I know we had an extensive discussion on it, and I, personally, I think this distribution works better, given the interim status we're in. But I just had a question, I'm just asking out of ignorance, truly, more than anything, but the Danielson evaluation model, that's the adopted model, you know, do you have conversations with teachers and administrative staff? Is this, is this model effective as we go forward, or, you know, since we're having these discussions, how does that model fit into what we're doing and how we're moving forward?
I can tell you with great feedback from administration mostly, because they actually get out there and evaluate the teachers. I have not done so since I was principal. So, the feedback I'm getting from the principals and also Mr. Wallace in our conversations is that we definitely are using the Danielson to its fullest intent. And I can tell you, since I've been in the district, that I have seen more support for staff with regard to our evaluation rubric. And when we did a little crosswalk between the new NEPF framework for evaluation of teachers and our current Danielson, it's pretty much, you know, they're not lockstep, there are a few tweaks in language, but they're very familiar to our staff. So, I had the privilege of being at the Rollout at Fritsch when they were doing the training since their validation school last year, and many of the staff, right then and there, said, you know, this is something we're used to. Yeah, the language is a little different here and there, but apart from that, it didn't seem like it was from another universe. So, and I know Mr. Wallace can speak for himself, but I know that when I've had discussions with him, it just seems like, again, very similar to what we're about and what we're used to. I do hope that I learned from the TLC what they plan to do with any licensed staff with regard to assistants, because it is an NRS, and so I'll be curious to see what they think of those things. I think we have a great system, personally and professionally.
Laurel?
I just wanted to second what you said about it comparing, because I did spend some time last year meeting with Mary Gary at Fritsch and comparing the Danielson method with the new evaluation system. Same ideas, new language, it's like rebranding, almost.
And from the administration, really, not a whole lot of pushback either with regard to that framework, so I don't think it's going to be a big jump, but again, we don't know what the jump is yet. Sure.
Any other? Mr. Wallace, do you want to put anything in?
Now you said it.[1699.65][1699.65](Laughter)
Brian Wallace, Orange County Education Association President. I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for that great conversation that night. I can't echo enough to each and every one of you, district staff, to trust us at times, that learning something that night, that what Vegas was doing proposed, and what Douglas was doing proposed, and I couldn't truly nail it down, and knowing they could come back tonight and say to you that it is what they were doing, that I could trust my sources, and that statewide, a lot of us are all in this together when it comes to this piece. And excellent questions on the current framework, also. Thank you, Trustee Crossman, for sitting down with Principal Gary and going through and taking a look at both evaluations. It's great to see you guys take such an active role in that. And then Eagle Valley will be taking even more active role as we become the next validation school within the district. So, I'll be able to give you more personal feedback at any time, or if any of you would like to come down and sit with me and go through my evals and how the NEPF will crosswalk with that, I'd be glad to help you guys out. Thank you very much.
You and I are storming that Senate hearing, telling them, we're stomping our feet, just to let you know.[1784.53][1784.53](Laughter) Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Anything else? Seeing none, this is an action item.
I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees adopt the following I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees adopt the following CCSD policies, policy 313A, 314A, and 315A, and approve September 23, 2014, as the adopted date.
Second by Lynette. Any more discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick correction, four hundred and eighty-six teachers. I was off a little bit.
Moving on to number twelve, update on September 12, 2014, Carson City School District official student enrollment count, for discussion only. Mr. Stokes and Mrs. Kima.
The fourth Friday of each school year is called Count Day. This year, that was September 12 for us. Count Day, the numbers that we report as of that date is seven thousand five hundred and eighty-five students, which is a gain of fifty-four students over last year. In your board packet, you have that first row of numbers, except for in your board packet, you got it delineated out per school. Here, it's just by grade level. The second set of numbers shows a change from last year's each grade level, what the difference is this year. So you can see, in second grade, we got quite a large group going through that. And last year, they were large in first grade, they were large in kindergarten the year before, and they're making their way through the system. What we use Count Day numbers for are the DSA, the Distributive School Account. That is, we submit those numbers, and we're funded by, on a per pupil basis, through that account. And Mr. Feeling can explain more about that if we ever have questions. We also use those Count Day numbers for our accountability report. We use those Count Day numbers as a starting point for our school performance system. We also use those numbers for staffing purposes, practical things, making sure that we have the right amount of teachers in the classroom. The next piece that we're going to talk about is weighted enrollment. What does that mean? And Mr. Feeling is going to join me here at the podium to talk about that piece.
Good evening, trustees. This may be a topic that you are familiar with, but when we look at enrollment for DSA purposes, as far as the amount of money you'll receive on a per student basis, what's important is that all your children, first grade through twelfth grade, count as one full individual. Kindergartners and pre-K kiddos do not. They count as point six of an individual. So it's, there's a little bit of math involved, but as you can see with the pre-K number of fifty-nine students, when you multiply that by point six, you get thirty-five point four. In the kindergarten, we had five hundred and eighty-seven kids, and with a weighted count, that goes to three hundred and fifty-two point two. So when you add those numbers together with all of your elementary students and all of your secondary students, that's where you come up with that new number, the seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six point six students. Do you have any questions about that?
Any questions? Steve?
Not specifically on this, but have you had a chance to look at statewide count?
No, I haven't. I haven't seen.
I'm just curious what, if ours reflects what ours compares to statewide, but it's just a curious question. Thank you.
Any other questions? Candace?
Well, just back on the weighted, so the net impact is going to be plus three hundred and eighteen thousand, is that what we're showing to the budget?
That is correct, yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just other pieces of information is, just to share with you what the variances look like by county. So the first column there is the variances that are into our district. You can see far exceeds the number of students who leave our district to go to another place. So I don't have any from Churchill County at this time. Douglas County, it's about a wash with our, with our district. Generally, it's because people work down in Douglas. And then the other factor that's a little bit different than the parents working in the district is that we do have families that live close to that Jacks Valley School up there in that region, that particular area. So you can see the difference in the variances going out of our district and then those coming in. And then the last slide, just to give you some information, is where's our variance is sitting by school? And then if I were to put another column there, and I would show you the variances that are by grade level, the majority of the variances are in K through three, with fifty-three variances in those grade levels. And then the next biggest cluster is in eighth and ninth grade. So you can see where our variance are sitting. Okay? So those were just some numbers, different ways to look at the numbers that we have on Count Day. Any questions?
Ron?
Okay, going forward. And AJ, what would be helpful? We're coming out of a recession, our employment, you know, numbers are, unemployment numbers are dropping. By school, just get a comparative three-year trend. What happened three years ago, and then, you know, last year, as we go forward? I'd look at, for example, and I like to look at these trends, Empire, we start on Count Day, we got a hundred and fifteen kindergartners, and then we go to the first grade, we've got seventy-nine, and then we go to one sixteen. Something is happening, and I know we went back to the birth rates and that, we could, you know, explain a lot of this. But going forward, with a recession coming to an end, how are, what are we going to do to project going forward? Types of jobs, number of jobs, demographics, there's a lot of things that go into going forward in forecasting and projecting, but it would be helpful to have, for me, anyway, I don't know, maybe the rest of the board doesn't want this, but the comparative by grade, by school, you know, where we're going, and so we can take a look at what's going on in that particular area.
Okay. Candace?
I'd want to, and obviously, this is something I wanted to have a discussion, a meeting about, was to look at the existing boundaries for our schools and to see what's been happening population-wise. And I wonder, just as a discussion item, it might be useful just to have, you know, on a future agenda, where we're just saying, okay, where are the school boundaries now? How has that? We could certainly look at it, but see the closest boundaries in terms of census tracks, what's happened from 2000 to 2010, to see, and how that may influence how some of those boundaries need to change in the future, if we're going to have some high growth happening in certain parts of the district. And it may be worthwhile to see if we can just have that as an agenda item. And as you know, I would like to sort of look at that and help any way I can, but I think that that may be helpful information looking forward.
Plus, you can see there's a disparity between, like Fremont's got almost five hundred, and Borderwicks got six hundred and fifty-one. I think it might be time to start looking at those numbers. Any other questions for Mrs. Kima? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too, Mr. Feeling. Moving on to number thirteen, approval of consent agenda for possible action.
I move, I move that the Carson City School Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items A, B, D, G, H, J, and K as submitted.
Second by Lynette. Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to number fourteen, request for future agenda topics. Candace?
I don't know if the timing's right, but do we have a sense yet of where we are with bill drafts that may have an impact, or I don't know if that's, or would it be too soon to know what has been submitted so far?
Trustee Stoll, are you talking about in general, or education bill drafts, or bill drafts from our district, or from like the Nevada Association of School Boards? I mean, there's a lot of variety from...
Sure, yes. All of it.
But it's interesting to note, and you may not know this, that school districts have, you know, X number of BDRs that they can submit. While we have not specifically gone out on that limb, per se, we do have, we do represent other seats, like on NASB and on NASS, where we do collaborate and we do give our opinions about certain types of educational bills. But they are starting to amass, and there is information out there regarding these BDRs. Of course, then there's a whole process of whether or not they make it out of, you know, that initial round into the committees where they're either put forward into the respective houses.
However, maybe the best way, but I think it'd just be interesting to hear from you or other, what you see is happening would be very helpful. Thank you.
And I can get Dottie to find out, too, on our side. I know the one that everybody's looking at right now is the one that's coming out of Reno with the, changing the school, the way school boards are formed. So that's one I think we're all going to be watching. Well, they want half-appointed and half-elected. Who's going to appoint them in?
A city.
You know, and I mean, it would work here, because we're one county, but if you have a lot of counties and a lot of schools. But that is, I know, one that's of major influence, but I will, by the next meeting, get something from Dottie to find out what's going on there. Which brings up another point, the legislative chairman for NASB is open, too, if anybody's interested in putting their name in that nomination hat. Steve?
You know, I don't know that I'm necessarily asking for a board item, but when we see something like the agreement the state has put out, has put together regarding the Tesla project, I am kind of curious what the, from a school district standpoint, how do you look at something like that and say, how, and we're forgiving a substantial amount of taxes through the years? I mean, you know, what kind of impact does that have on the educational systems that are going to be, you know, having to provide the education for the, for the kids related to any growth in that regard? And that'll be an interesting, as I say, I don't think it's something we need to put on any agenda, but it'll be an interesting thing to watch.
Yeah, I can't imagine Washoe with all their capital needs projects that they can't do, having that flooding in. Anybody else? Seeing none, we are adjourned before eight-thirty. Have a good night, and we'll all see you on Monday at the middle school track.